Okay, the adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 6, 2021. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier News, the Echo Sentinel, and tapped into Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ballish?
Here.
Mr. Bishi?
Here.
Mr. Brazee?
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Keller, Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mrs. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
And Mr. Franco?
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
Mr. Bishi?
On the minutes, approval of minutes, resolved that the Board of Education approves the public session minutes of the January 4th, 2021 board meeting.
A second?
Thank you. Mr. Ballish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle?
Yes, nothing to report for HIV or suspension. The board received one email from a parent about return to school topics. That's it for correspondence and information.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mingle. Just a few words. Not much for me to add this meeting. I just want everyone to be aware that we did have our first school closure, as you probably already know, with Mount Horeb, due to the COVID cases that were in the school that could not be traced to a source. We followed all the guidelines provided to us by the state. I know that there was some communication over the last week about the change in guidelines that the state provided. I was in communication with Dr. Mingle over the weekend regarding these changes. And the circumstances that led to our school closure at Mount Horeb would not have been affected by this change in language because of the suspicion of the cases being related. But we are happy to see that they changed the language and added the discretion by our investigative team to determine whether or not cases were related to one another or not. Other than that, I will give it off to Dr. Mingle, superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. So just to build on that, thank you to the parents and students and staff administration at Mount Horeb. Of course, we know it's inconvenient and a challenge to shift with a day's notice to fully remote for two weeks, but we appreciate everybody's patience and assistance. We applied lessons learned from ALT to the Mount Horeb situation. We've already done after-action analysis to know what we can do better next time, if unfortunately we have to face that kind of a situation again, of course. I do want to share with the board members a proclamation from the governor. This is School Board Member Appreciation Month. And so the governor issued a proclamation that says, "Whereas New Jersey's public schools serve nearly 1.4 million children in pre-K through 12th grade, and whereas nearly 5,000 local Board of Education members in New Jersey devote countless hours without remuneration to the oversight of school district operations, including finance, policy, curriculum, and staffing; and whereas New Jersey's local Boards of Education endeavor to meet the challenges facing public schools and help students obtain the education necessary for post-secondary success so they may compete in a global economy." Now therefore, Governor Murphy declares January 2021 as School Board Recognition Month. On behalf of Mrs. Lenhart, myself, and our teams, I just want to say thank you to the board members. You do put in countless hours. Members of the public may not see all the work that goes in behind the scenes to be prepared for what at a public meeting might be a quick vote on something, but there are many pages of backup information and Q and A and all that. So thank you for all of your commitment and dedication to the community. Normally, we would have some treats at this meeting. Hopefully, there's a treat somewhere off-camera that you're going to be able to enjoy during a break at some point. Two other quick comments from me. I did send a letter out to all parents and staff today about tomorrow's weather. A question that came up that's probably good for everybody to be aware of is, how do you decide when to use a distance day versus when to use a snow day if there's a snow forecast? And the answer for us for tomorrow is, if we have to be closed because it's a snow day, it's not going to be a fun-playing-in-the-snow snow day. And so we might as well not waste what could be a future fun-playing-in-the-snow snow day. So we will be up early in the morning with all the Watchung Hills districts looking at the conditions and deciding what's the safest course forward tomorrow. And of course, if we make any change, there will be a call and an email very early tomorrow morning to our parents. And finally, I want everybody to be aware that one of the goals in our strategic plan has to do with the voice and engagement of all stakeholders. And this Thursday, we will be holding the first meeting of the Strategic Plan Stakeholder Voice and Engagement Committee. That group includes 16 parents, community members, as well as somewhere around 10 to 12 teaching and other instructional staff members plus members of our leadership team, who will be looking at the action plans around year one of strategic planning and brainstorming around what comes next. So we're very happy to bring that group together this Thursday to continue that work that we started, or we adopted this strategic plan almost a year ago. We were sidelined by COVID and returned to school, but we're happy to get everybody together this Thursday remotely to work on that. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Franco.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. So now we'll move on to the audit report presentation. We have Steve McDermott of Suppley Clooney. Steve, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, my name is Steve McDermott. I'm an audit manager with Suppley Clooney and Company, and I was in charge of the fieldwork again this year. We performed the fiscal year 2020 audit for the year ended June 30, 2020, which included the financial statements and certain compliance items that the Department of Education requires us to look at. We did the actual fieldwork for the audit, beginning in mid-September and ending in early October. The reports were delayed due to missing information regarding post-retirement benefits, which is no fault of the district. It's information provided by the state of New Jersey, and that became available right around Christmas. And at that time, we started processing the reports which you now have. We present two reports, one being the CAFER, which stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This contains your financial statements and our opinion on them. And that opinion is, once again, an unqualified opinion. That is the preferred opinion, as opposed to qualified, which would indicate problems with your financial statements. We also present the AMR, or Auditor's Management Report. This is where any findings or recommendations regarding compliance issues would be disclosed. And we're happy to report, again, that there are no recommendations in the report this year. To discuss your financial position for just a minute, your fund balance, which is listed on the last page of Exhibit C1 in the CAFER on a budgetary basis. The grand total is $11,767,992. That consists of an unrestricted fund balance of $1,275,641, which is the maximum allowed with the state's required calculation for unrestricted fund balance. You have a reserve for encumbrances of $213,101. Then you have excess surplus resulting from the current year of $462, and excess surplus from the prior year of $461,000. Then you have some restricted reserves. One of them is the capital reserve, which is $9,225,791. And as a side note, most of that is already earmarked and to be spent on paying down the note for your capital improvements. You have a maintenance reserve of $118,800 and an emergency reserve of $11,659. I just want to say that despite the challenges of the year that we've all dealt with, Pat and her staff made the process as smooth as we could possibly expect. Due to the district's visitor policy at the time, we did the audit completely remotely, which was a change for us. We're used to being on-site during the summer, when things are slower for everyone. Due to our own delays, we pushed it back into September and October while school was in session. And Pat and the staff were great about replying to emails and getting us information in a timely fashion. I just want to talk about a few other things looking forward that we've been mentioning to all of our districts this year. It was obviously a very challenging year for everyone. We were just urging everyone to take a look at their technology controls and procedures with remote access. At the end of 2020, everyone just did whatever they could do as quickly as possible to keep things going. But we're urging everybody to review that as we go forward to make sure that we're using the best technology, balancing functionality and cost to keep the business office operations as seamless as possible, no matter what comes our way. Also, the topic of cross-training has come up as a renewed interest in a lot of places where it's been put on the back burner in the past sometimes. But with the much more prevalent possibility of losing somebody for a month-plus this year, it's a topic that we're reminding people about. It's a good idea to practice when possible. There's a few things coming up in the governmental accounting world, just to make mention of. GASBEE, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, sets rules for governmental accounting. And GASBEE 84 was supposed to have been implemented already, but due to delays prior to the virus, plus this period of time, it was delayed even further. And it is required to be integrated into the financial statements for the year that we're in now, which will involve moving certain fiduciary funds, such as unemployment funds, student activities. If you had a scholarship account or payroll agency-type accounts, which were previously presented completely separate, will be integrated into the main body of the financial statements. In year one, it's just going to be merged after the fact into the CAFER through adjustments. In year two, the state's likely to require it to be completely merged into your actual financials, which will require some partnership with your software vendors to change the way your board secretary reports are presented, and some other things with that. And just one other item, GASBEE 87 relates to leases. Will change the way any leases that you have are presented in the CAFER in the future. Whereas currently, only capital leases are reported as liabilities, in the future, operating leases will be treated identical to capital leases, and both will be reported as liabilities. That's all I have at this time. If you guys have any questions or anything else you wanted to speak about related to the audit?
Okay, thank you, Steve. Are there any questions for Steve regarding the audit from board members? Just raise your hand, Mr. Brazee.
Not necessarily a question, just, you know, also wanted to recognize administration, Pat and her team. It's easy to say, you know, on B5 tonight, no recommendations and no corrective actions, but there's a, I think we all know, there's a tremendous amount of work behind that by the entire team. So certainly a formal thank you to that team for all they do.
I think everyone would agree with that statement. Any other?
I accept the thanks on behalf of the many, many people that go into that audit.
Okay, any other questions regarding the audit? Okay, seeing none, say thank you to Steve. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, guys.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to discussions we have on the agenda today, discussing the norms for board communication. These are the, I'm pretty self-explanatory, but kind of an outline of the way we should be communicating as a board between each other and to the public. Is there anyone that would like to discuss? This is something we put up once a year, just so it's on the agenda. Anyone have any issues to discuss regarding the norms for board communication? Mrs. Zahn?
Yes, I actually think the superintendent in today's update circulated some comments that I had shared with regard to minutes for committees, that the current written board norms are how we actually in practice handle reporting out on committee meetings is different from what is reflected in the norms. I don't have a strong view as to what's the right way to go, but I did put that out there that we probably want to look at either modifying the language or alternatively agreeing to adhere more closely to the norms as they're currently written.
So your concern is that the committee chair discusses the topics of the meeting without an approval of the minutes from that meeting?
No, no, I think that it's too strong to say I'm quote concerned, first of all. The norms, as they're written, contemplate that at committee meetings, if time allows, the committee members will review the minutes there. That subsequent to that, the minutes will be circulated to the committee members, who can then comment. Subsequent to that, they will be attached to the next superintendent's update to the entire board, and only after that are they reported out. And we have a process where it's not uncommon for chair people to report out to the full board at a board meeting without those interim steps being taken. I don't think that necessarily is a problem, but it is definitely different from what is written in the norms. So I mean, if you have a 6 o'clock meeting on the day of a board meeting, as we frequently do, and if the members are all present for that meeting, and the minutes are reviewed, and everyone finds them agreeable, I'm not sure there's a big problem with turning around and reporting that out an hour later at the full board meeting, but that is contrary to the written norms. So my comment is only that we should either modify the norm, how they're written, or comply with them, one of the two. And I don't have a strong view which we should do, but right now, we're not complying with them. I mean, Matt, is that how you read these as well?
I agree. And like you, I don't know that I have a strong view. We did actually talk about it in curriculum today because it came up of, should we report out today about our curriculum committee meeting? Historically, this norm was put in four and a half years ago. At that time, there were not really committee minutes that were shared publicly the way they are now. And everybody on the board has access to every committee agenda and can see in real time the committee minutes, which was not the case at that time. So it might be that the time has passed the need at this point, and it's okay. But I agree, we should probably be in compliance. Either we should change, either way, we should change it to match. The only thing I would say that came up in our conversation at Curriculum Committee was, if you wait to report out until after the next superintendent's update, it gives the other board members time to read and process the committee minutes, which might make them better positioned to ask questions at the public meeting. That would be an argument for sticking to the norms as they are now.
Okay, is there a proposal to modify? Or just a directive to adhere to the norms that as written? How do we want to do this?
Does anyone care?
Well, I mean, my view on it is, you know, having only been here for two years, wasn't around when this norm was created. My view is that most of the committee meetings don't have any kind of controversial topics. So I think for the most part, reporting out on the committee, as long as it's agreed, that it's done by the committee to be reported kind of immediately after, I think is okay. Unless otherwise stated by the committee where there's reservation about discussion. So maybe each committee can determine at the end of its meeting whether or not it should be discussed or you should wait until the minutes are approved.
What about the comment made apparently at Curriculum that abiding by the norms, the way they're currently written, give board members who do not sit on the committee an additional opportunity to process the minutes and to seek additional information if they need it? Again, I have a strong feeling either way.
Mr. Brazee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Franco. It's a very good point. I think we're lucky on this board. We have very good attendance. But in all cases, you know, things pop up, family life, you know, in general. So in my head, I'm leaning more towards following the norms as written in the event that, for example, if someone was not here tonight, they would have the opportunity, if Curriculum, for example, were to read out the minutes tonight, they would actually have the opportunity to read those after the fact and come to the next board meeting or respond to an update with questions. I don't think that's a strong case, to be honest. I'm just trying to think of reasons for that. That's just one that came to mind, for what it's worth.
Anybody else have thoughts on this?
So, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bishi.
Is the idea, can a board member bring up an issue on, like, two committee meetings ago? Are board members always allowed to bring up points regarding committee reports? Or like, is it like you only have one chance, and you can only bring it up at the meeting, you know, subsequent to the committee meeting?
I mean, a board member can discuss any topic at any time if they wish. I mean, I wouldn't discuss things that have been voted on in the past, but other than that, you can discuss whatever you want.
Yeah.
Ms. David, Mr. Brazee, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's exactly what I was going to say. Mr. Franco, it really comes to fruition at the point where there's a vote on a topic, like, for example, in tonight's agenda, there's items from the Finance Committee meeting specifically that we spoke of in the last committee. So I think, I didn't, I didn't spell that out well enough, but I think the voting is what the, and of course, you can bring it up after the fact. Nothing will stop you from that. Although the vote had already been made, or you may be voting on something that you're unsure of because of that. So just food for thought.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is we should just try and make an effort to stick to the norms as they're written. Let's just make that effort. And you don't have to report at 7 o'clock what you met about at 6 o'clock until there's some time to get the information out to the board. Any other discussion on this topic? Okay, seeing none, let's go to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Mr. Brazee?
I think so, but no, I'm not sure if I even qualified myself in that statement, so.
I think you do.
All right, I'll give it my best. The Finance Operations and Security Committee met on Tuesday, January 19th, for our first meeting of this calendar year. I will say it was a very productive meeting. So thank you for those who participated. We were also joined by Mr. Pate, as well as a couple representatives from Parrot Sanjin for part of the meeting, who are our district architects. Topics we discussed were the traditional follow-up items, including traffic beacons, looked at the facilities project schedule, and upcoming changes to the proposed flexible spending account, independent care account changes. We did review the committee goals. One committee goal that we are suggesting in tonight's agenda as B7 is goal number three. The committee recommends commending, advise the board on the funding and implementation of the capital improvement plan, the difference there being the funding and part that was not previously included. The committee also reviewed the central school roof bid opening results. We went over those with Mr. Pate's assistance to step through those, to make sure we were understanding those. Ultimately, the committee did support moving forward with the project as it was bid, and that is on tonight's agenda as item B9. Went into a fairly good and a lengthy discussion with PSA regarding referendum projects in scope and out of scope and what could be there. The middle school science labs was, I think, a great discussion in terms of what are the options there? That was, I think, if I'm recalling correctly, that was the biggest ticket item on the referendum list that we had. The ROI for replacing some of the lights in the buildings to LEDs in those four to six years. Security vestibules came up, so that was an interesting topic. There were a couple that the committee is suggesting to remove out of scope from the referendum perspective, not remove them from scope completely of projects, but remove them from just the referendum piece. There is kind of a question about whether those qualify for debt service aid or not, so that fueled into that decision as well. The budget, we went over the initial budget. We talked about Budget Buddies. So by now or soon thereafter, if you have not heard from your Budget Buddy, or if you are on the finance team and have a Budget Buddy, if you could kindly reach out, there are some topics that we're looking to get feedback on before our next meeting, which we moved up to February 8th instead of the originally planned February 22nd. We did leave the 22nd on the calendar, but we're hoping to meet February 8th for an initial capital reserve forecast that we anticipate will be ready by then. Just, and I went through a lot. It was a great meeting. And as we just spoke of, the whole board has the access to all the minutes. There's a lot of links in the minutes, including the initial budget. So I would certainly encourage all to look around, ask questions, and I think we'll have some upcoming discussions. So thank you, Mr. Franco.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brazee. It was a good meeting. I would agree. Anybody else have any committee reports? Ms. Dr. Mingle?
The Ad hoc Return to School Committee met last Wednesday afternoon. We discussed employee recall procedures that are underway. We debriefed the ALT and Mount Horeb full-distance shifts based on cases. We talked about attempts to host a vaccine, which I think a vaccine clinic, which I think I reported on at the last board meeting. We have done everything that's in our control to be able to provide vaccines to our employees. However, as everybody can see in the newspaper, there are not enough vaccines in the state for them to actually provide them to us. So we are still on hold. Hopefully, at some point, we would get a call and we'd be able to help expedite things for our staff. But currently, that doesn't seem promising at the moment. We updated on various relatively minor things from different subcommittees in the administration. And then the big ticket item is that we anticipate bringing to the board a proposal at the next meeting about returning more students, more days per week, specifically a focus on Grade III and on middle school self-contained special education. We've talked about this a couple times before. The plan is that we would bring that to the board at the next meeting with an implementation plan that was dependent on the status of the state's color-coded system. So hopefully, we're yellow by then, and we can just have date certain proposals. But either way, our plan would be to bring that back to the board for consideration at the next meeting, which is on a Tuesday for everybody who's watching the board schedule because of President's Weekend. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mingle. I think that's it, right? Curriculum met tonight, so we'll wait on that one, and Personnel doesn't meet for another week or so. Public commentary. I'll open the floor to public commentary. You have three minutes to talk about any item that's on the agenda. Please state your name and address, and turn on your camera, and use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom if you would like to make any public commentary related to agenda items only. As a reminder, there will be a second opportunity for public commentary on any item. This section is just for agenda items. Mrs. Lenhart, do we have any written questions submitted? No, okay. I'll give another five seconds to see if any hands are raised. Okay, seeing none. If you're unable to raise your hand, you just unmute yourself and speak. Give you a few seconds for that. Okay, items for board consideration. Is there any item for board consideration that a board member would like to have pulled for discussion or separate vote? Mr. Bishi?
Just for, just a question, not for a separate vote. Ms. Lenhart, I just wanted to reiterate, great job on no comments at all in the audit, which is a tall order to accomplish. On the table in B5, that's just a standard report that gets generated, right? There's no action of the board required. That's just a standard table that is generated out of one of those two reports that the auditor mentioned?
Yes, actually, that's something I create. I believe it's as a tool, if people would find it helpful, rather than the voluminous reports.
Gotcha. So it's more of an FYI, no action required or anything of the board?
So what you're accepting is the CAFER and the AMR. That's what you're accepting.
Thank you. Congrats again.
Thank you.
Any other board members like to poll or discuss? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Bishi, if you would.
All right, let's see if I can get this right. Motion to approve agenda items seven?
Yeah.
A one through A five, B one through B nine, C one through C eight, and D one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brizzi?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Okay, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business to discuss? Okay, seeing none. Any, oh, sorry, Mrs. Zahn?
I'm, I'm sorry. I just need a little clarification from our finance chair regarding the readout on the finance committee. There, we are looking for some feedback from the whole board before our next meeting. Is that, is there anything that we need to be discussing here tonight?
Not to my knowledge, no. I believe there was, I will look at the minutes myself to make sure I'm not. Committee members will review the initial information with their budget buddies prior to the next meeting and gather feedback about the expiring bank cap and its potential impact on capital planning. So that is reading from the minutes, if I'm reading correctly. So I don't believe there's anything here tonight. If I'm, if I'm mistaken, there's three others that I would, that were there, five others. I would welcome feedback.
I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business to be discussed? Anybody have any items they want to bring up? Again, seeing none. Public commentary. This is your second opportunity for public commentary. Please use the raise your hand feature within the Zoom, and I will call upon you in the order in which you raise your hand. This can be for any topic whatsoever. Again, you have three minutes. Please turn on your camera, microphone, state your name and address. Shafali, I see your name, Shafali. Please, go ahead.
Hi, Shafali Tajani, one Aspen Court. I did join a few months late, so apologies if this was addressed, but I believe I saw that the New Jersey Department of Health did change their requirements for what constitutes a closure when it's two or more cases in a fourteen day period, and that was schools would only close. The addition was if school transmission was suspected. So I, I, are we moving forward? Will we be adopting that? Or is that still on a case-by-case basis? I mean, basically, what I'm asking is if don't suspect in school transmission of those cases, will the school remain open?
We, we did address that early in the meeting.
Sorry.
And I think we, we can answer you after everyone's had their chance to.
Okay, thanks.
Marie Spreck?
Hi, my name's Mariette Chelitvich. I live at eighteen King George Road. I have three children at ALT, K, second and fourth grade. So I had a, I had a, just a commentary about the surveys that come out. I'm finding them a little frustrating, mostly because when you ask certain questions, I don't know the ramifications for my answers. So I'm comfortable with my kid eating in the classroom. I'm comfortable if all of the third grade is eating in the lunchroom because we need in order to be, for them to be able to spread out. But then I don't know what that means in terms of if we do have a case and how that's going to affect. And at the beginning of the year, one of the things that you guys discussed was how, because of all the protocols that we have in place, that we really should be able to just shut down like a grade versus, or a class versus the whole school. So if, if it doesn't matter with all of our protocols, if we just have two cases and the whole shoot, school's gonna be shut down, I'm wondering if some of them can be adjusted, and then maybe we talk about what that means and what that, the, the potential ramifications for those, because I'd be better able to answer, like, I feel like everybody's kind of in this middle ground because nobody wants school to shut down. But we'd also like to see more kids get into school as well. And I know that the busing was an issue, and I, I also reflected on the comments in the beginning of the year that if you sign up for the bus, you have to sign up for the full year. And then I remember that if we waive our right now, that that may mean we have to waive it for the rest of the year, but I'm wondering if we all signed up, three hundred people signed up for the bus. I know there's more. And then twenty of them waived their right. If the situation changes, why can't those same twenty go back onto the bus? Because I'll waive my right if that means that as the situation changes, I can get back on to allow for more kids to get into the school. So I just would like some clarification on some of those things so that the parents and myself, other parents and myself can make better informed decisions. And then I have one more thing. Oh, is it the case that we're always going to like be last minute notification on whether or not the school will be closed? Because some of the kids, my kid's backpack weighs more than he does in fourth grade. It's like fifty pounds he's carrying, and he doesn't even really weigh that much. And so it, like, are we gonna, is that what, like, do we have to keep transporting everything? If, like, is it, is it, is it really that minute to minute, or can we, like, rethink maybe potentially leaving some of the kids backpack stuff in their backpacks? I know for some of the kids who are hybrid, that would be harder, but like K through two, that, that might be helpful. And just one final thing, this wouldn't actually apply to my one kid who is at home. He wouldn't qualify, but I wonder if there was any thoughts as to helping out students who don't qualify for special education but are clearly struggling. So maybe there's a way to allow for maybe some of the kids who have the lowest of the I-ready tests. If we could think about potentially bringing them back, or like kids that the teachers identify that they just don't have the focus and not like at parent request, strictly at like teacher request, so that like some of those kids, like I hear, I, I actually love that I get to hear my fourth, the fourth grader, the fourth grade teachers at ALT, shout out, they're so amazing. It's really fun to listen to them, but I can hear that there's like certain students that they're trying to get engaged when they're online, and it takes them a long time, and it's not, this is normal. There's kids, kids are gonna be, like, it's normal for the teacher to be like, to try to refocus you. It's normal for a kid to get distracted, but I, I can't help but think that this is taking extra time because it's even harder for some kids when they don't have a physical presence there. So just maybe like helping out some of the more kids, kids that may be struggling more. That's all.
Okay.
Oh, great job.
Thank you. Mrs. Silver? You're muted.
I know, that's hard to believe. Word of ed, Mrs. Lenhart, Dr. Mingle. I know we're in orange. I know we're supposed to be grateful for our children even being in the buildings. I know that's more than many other districts. And I know now two masks might be better than one. I could go on endlessly with statements that are so commonplace now, but I'm educated and knowledgeable. But if someone had told me that at any time in my life I would be arguing for my child's public education while my child stood by me begging to get back in the classroom, I would have thought they were crazy. But the happenings of the past year have changed my opinion on anything that I believe to be fact. Even though the surveys continue to seemingly get buried in emails rather than highlighted to obtain the largest feedback possible, the BOE has certainly been forthcoming with COVID statistics. I know I'm not alone in feeling blind to the bigger picture of our children's overall education, though. By tracking those statistics provided as of eighteen January, we have had a total of forty-six confirmed cases in our school system. And looking at what that number means, in the roughly fifteen hundred students in our five buildings, that's a three percent positivity rate. And as we can see, even in a time when it's expected to spike dramatically, our families are doing all they can to see that this number remains low. And while we continue to do all we can, we need to know what you are doing to keep the process of returning to school moving forward. We have heard no word of any next plan, and I can't imagine anyone wouldn't agree that our children are not getting the same quality of education that they would in a former full school day and week. This is no fault of the teachers, as there's only so much time to get so much done, and they're following the rules they're presented with. We have established this is not an ideal learning situation, and we're heading into eleven months with no end in sight, and it has to end, at least in regards to our children's education. At what point is something going to stand up and finally say, we're not going to take it anymore? You are our voice and you are our advocates. What steps are being taken to connect with those that have the ability to approve a return to school plan? Is there even a plan in the works? For a problem that initially was only supposed to delay a few weeks, it has turned into almost a year of our children being undereducated, our small businesses losing their livelihoods, and families stretching thin on patience and encouragement. If there was some light at the end of the tunnel that we were aiming to reach, I believe people could better support the circumstances we are in. Give us that hope, please. Find a way to meet whatever standards get us back in. Private schools are in full days, and while I'm well aware their class sizes are smaller, this is where creative thinking has to take precedence. Have we exhausted every comparison to other school districts? Have we maxed out capacity in teachers in every possible setting that allow children in the classrooms? When do we realize the mental health of everyone is paramount, and this is a huge component in that equation? I am not one who feels complaining to hear oneself speak useful. I always try to offer a solution to a hurdle, but I've got nothing. Though someone does, some kids are back in school. Someone figured it out. I take pause trying to see why all schools are not following the models that have worked. Virtual education is going to lead to virtual knowledge in the long run, if they even absorb anything in the meantime. I'm sorry, I can only imagine sitting on the board is really hard right now. I applaud those that chose to step up in the midst of this chaos, no less. While I serve our schools in town in a different capacity, I'm not alone in feeling concerns are falling on deaf ears at our BOE, though, and this is when we all need to work together the most. At the very least, please admit this is subpar and include parents in the discussions on how to get back to when we were not subpar. This should be the first step and make a full day a possibility. Be the voice of reason during a time of sheer insanity. These kids should come first, and that's all we should be thinking about right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. Sumitra Nicholson?
Hi, Sumitra Nicholson, thirty-one Livingston Avenue, Warren. I just had a question regarding the hybrid calendar. I know we had gotten a printed calendar for September through November and then December to January, listing all the in-person versus virtual days, and I was just wondering if we would be getting another printed one for, I guess, February and March. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll answer your question. Daniel Crowson, if I'm pronouncing that right.
Yes, hi, how are you? Daniel Crowson, forty-two Fairfield Avenue here in Warren. Actually, on the local recreation committee here in town, I just wanted to echo on what one of the ladies prior had mentioned about thinking outside the box. I know that us from the Recreation Commission would love to, to, to meet and think about creative solutions to help students that are most struggling. Obviously, there are a lot of competing factors here with getting students back full-time. But programs like perhaps a teacher in the library program or some type of innovative solution where even though students may not be full day, five days a week right now, for those that may not be a student with a disability but may still be struggling in this environment, thinking creatively to, to get them to work with small groups of teachers or some after-school hours to support them in their learning. Just wanted to put out there that we're certain, certainly happy to, to help in any way, think through that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crowson. Any other public commentary? Nancy Andrews?
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I am speaking on behalf of the Warren Township Education Association. And I actually wanted to just take this opportunity to thank the board for its continued support surrounding all of the safety protocols and procedures that have been in place since September. For the past five months, our schools have done a tremendous job managing and adhering to those guidelines. And I believe that it's been due to these efforts that our school buildings have been mostly able to stay open. Now even more, it is important for us to continue to maintain that high level of risk management that has kept our schools a safe place during this pandemic. The WTA has two main priorities, maintaining and advocating for the safety of our members and providing the highest level of instruction and support to our students. We look forward to continuing to work with administration and the board to achieve both of these goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Obviously, this, we couldn't get even this far without the help of the WTA, the administration, the parents, everyone involved. So thank you for your comments. Any other public commentary? Mrs. Lenhart, do we have any written comments? No.
We do not.
Okay, Dr. Mingle, would you like to respond to a couple of these questions?
Yep, definitely. Thank you, Mr. Franco. And thank you for all the, the input. Mr. Cross, and I'll just start there. If you want to reach out to me directly by email, we can connect, and I can connect you with the right people. I'd be happy to do that. And if you, if you don't see my email on the website, if you just email COVID nineteen at the district email address, that comes to me too. Thank you. So just to, to reiterate a couple of things from the top of the meeting about the Department of Health guidelines, and I should go a little bit further. So those guidelines have a date of last Tuesday. They weren't actually sent to districts until last Thursday. I did meet with our local public health official last Thursday, Friday to review the Mount Horeb status under those guidelines to make sure that there wasn't a recommendation, and there was not a recommendation from the health official to change that status. So to answer the question more largely, yes, we do follow whatever the Department of Health guidelines are in terms of closure. Those are really guidelines. If you look at the top of that document, they're guidelines to the health official of what the health officials are supposed to tell us. So we will absolutely go to that. It does change the burden to make it easier to stay open than it was previously. So that it is a fairly significant shift. Instead of it just being, we're not sure where the case was from, which is what it used to be. If there were two cases and we weren't sure, it shifted to if there are two cases and we think there's a possibility that it was in school, which is, may sound like semantics, but that's an important shift from, we just don't know to, there's a possibility the school was a location. So that's important. Thank you for the feedback about kind of understanding the ramifications of survey questions. So there, I hear that, and one of the things that we will, that we're trying to do is when we're in the midst of making a major recommendation or change, we target the survey to the parents who are affected by it and try to make it much clearer, you know, if you say yes to this, this is the kind of thing that might happen. For example, in late November, when things were still yellow, when we were moving along our continuum, we surveyed elementary school parents about if you are willing to give up your seat in the bus, we might be able to bring more grades back right now. So that was a very specific, if this happens, then we can do that. And we'll look to see where we can include that in the future. The monthly surveys give us kind of a snapshot of, you know, is, where is public opinion going from different stakeholders in general, but I hear on the, you know, I might, I might choose a different answer if I knew what was gonna come from sacrificing this thing personally. So we'll, we'll look and see where we can, where we can capitalize on that. And programs, this kind of goes to a couple of different comments. For students who don't qualify for special education but need help, we actually have quite a lot in place even right now. So if there's any parent on the call who feels like their child needs support, they don't have special education supports, they need support of some kind, the classroom teacher is the first step, but moving through the chain of command, there's an entire process for how we can get that support, not only in the school year, but as you probably saw in the updates on the website, the summer fund program, we are planning full steam ahead for a entirely in-person summer fund program. Obviously, optimistically that the conditions will allow that to, to take place. That includes really high investment in academic support by the board at no cost to the families to try to make sure that any summer learning loss or others are addressed. So there are definitely programs in place now for students who are in need of support. There's a process at each school for how we analyze and make recommendations around that. As I mentioned at the top, we do intend that at the next meeting, we will have the proposal that will be dependent on moving back to yellow for bringing more students back. We continually review what other districts are doing. Just last week, we had a county meeting where every district in the county went through their current status, what they're working on, where they think things are going. And I've reached out to several districts and other counties whenever, and I've said this before at meetings, and I appreciate, I, I did receive an email from a parent with a specific school district to contact. Whenever that happens, we reach out and try to find out what they're doing. One of the things we've learned is that in some counties, other than Somerset, the public health officials are advising that they don't have to abide by physical distancing rules. And in those counties where they're telling people they don't need to maintain six-foot distancing, as you can all imagine, that changes the entire calculus of how many kids you can have in, what the classroom looks like and all of that. That is not recommended by any of the Somerset County Health officials, which plays into our decision-making, but we do constantly ask those questions. That has not been changed in the state guidance, like some of the other things. Hybrid calendar, I made a note here. The hybrid calendar is up on the website. There's like a running calendar, but it's not, I think it's not the PDF that you want to be able to print out and like put on the fridge. I'll make sure that that gets fixed tomorrow.
and like put on the fridge, I'll make sure that gets fixed tomorrow. And I think I addressed the questions, Mr. Franco.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mingle. I believe that closes us out. So anybody else have any, any board members have any other topics they'd like to discuss?
Yes, I just had one. I think specifically for Mount Horeb, they're obviously, the kids are out, and then I think the first day they get back, they're taking standardized testing. And I think one of the, the challenges that we're feeling is they have so much screen time in this remote setting. Is there a way to potentially space out so they don't have to take that test the first day they're back? I'm forgetting the cohort, but I know there's a cohort that goes back and is taking that test the first day they're back. So they're going kind of from this, this screen time overload, if you will, in the remote setting and directly to that when they get to school to take the test. And I get it that there's certain scheduling around that, but I guess the question is, is there a way to spread that out so that there's a little bit of downtime with regards to, to screen time and computer reliance?
Mr. Weinstein, I would suggest that you bring that up with your teacher and principal on that very specific issue. I don't think that that's necessarily something we should be discussing here. Unless, Dr. Mingle, you disagree?
I don't, I'm not prepared to discuss it here right now, but I can make sure. We did talk about I-ready at curriculum committee, and so I can make sure there's information for the whole board on Thursday about, and embed that question there as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Bellish, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Franco? All right, board members only, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.